Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our District 66 Legislative Candidate Forum. My name is Ashna Altov, and I am a LEAGUE-trained moderator and member. Today's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of St. Paul in partnership with St. Paul Neighborhood Network, University of St. Thomas, Union Park District Council, and Mitchell-Hellman School of Law. We believe the success of our state depends on the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials. Thus, it is intentional for the public to better understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office in Minnesota. It is this understanding that better equips voters with information to make informed voting decisions. We appreciate candidates taking their time to be here tonight. The candidates participating in today's forum have all agreed to the forum rules which were included in the invitation to participate. Each candidate will be given two minutes as an introductory statement. The candidates will have one minute to answer questions and 30 seconds for rebuttal if necessary. A timer will signal then when they have 15 seconds remaining and when their time is up. They will also be given one minute for their closing statements. Please note that per League of Women Voters Minnesota, it is important for LEAGUES to establish rules for photography and filming of debates in order to prevent such images and videos from being used improperly. For virtual or hybrid events, League of Women Voters U.S. recommends that debate moderators issue a verbal statement at the beginning of the debate to this effect. Recordings of this event, whether they be in person or of a computer screen, may not be used without the express written approval of the LEAGUE. The LEAGUE will only allow audio/video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety, except by media reporters reporting on the event. The statement should be written in the description of the virtual event. LEAGUES may also consider having the moderator reiterate this message at the end or in the Just to make it clear, this is the St. Paul School Board Candidate Forum. And with that, we'll begin with our opening statement. I would like Ms. Charlotte Castro to begin.
Thank you for the time here today. I really appreciate this forum. I think it's helpful to give voters insight into what we're thinking and what we're planning as we're running for school board. Some of you have heard this story before, but when I was younger, my parents told me that I could be whatever I wanted. And my teachers told me the exact same thing, and both of them believed it, and so did I. And so, for a time, I wanted to be a chef, and then a lawyer, and then a doctor. And today, I'm none of those things. I'm a systems analyst and an implementation specialist, and I teach for Minnesota State. I believe that all students need to be served by the schools that they attend and by the individuals that serve them, whether that be teachers, resource individuals, paraprofessionals, and the school board. I believe that more needs to be done for students and for teachers to provide the education that they need and deserve to make it into the next years of their life, whether that be from high school to college, or to a trade school, or to an internship, or an apprenticeship. I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to have those hard conversations that need to be had today in our school districts with our students, and our teachers, and our parents, and our community leaders. And I'm ready to work to help to get the educational system in St. Paul to where it needs to be and to help all students. Thank you.
Mr. James Fenshaw can go next.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters St. Paul, SPNN, and Community Partners for hosting us this evening. I'm a proud St. Paul Public School graduate and son of two longtime St. Paul Public School teachers, or excuse me, and they were actually taught in Minneapolis Public Schools. My work in community and my experience as a student in FPPS has taught me the value of a strong public school system within a capital city. My experience as a student taught me a lot about student experience, about challenges that different student populations face, and areas that we can improve our schools to make the best educational outcomes for all students. I'm excited to be running for school board in this November special election happening on November 3rd. I'm passionate about our schools. I've gained lots of governance experience at different-sized institutions. And especially during these challenging times, I'm ready to get to work on behalf of all St. Paul students, families, teachers, and staff, and I hope to earn your vote in this November's election. Thank you.
Mr. Keith Hardy.
Want to thank the League of Women Voters, SPNN, and all those who are responsible for giving us this opportunity to introduce ourselves as candidates for the special election for the school board seat at St. Paul Public Schools. I'm Keith Hardy. I'm sad that this opportunity is before us because we definitely lost a great leader in Marty Jeong, but I definitely look forward to the opportunity to serve our students, our families, our educators, our administrators, and all of our partners who want to see St. Paul Public Schools be as successful as possible in this year of primarily distance learning. 2020 definitely has been a challenging year. It definitely has been a year of change. Yet, the positive side of me believes there is an opportunity for this to be a year to cherish. My mother and my father, who both dropped out of school before they graduated, wanted to be sure, my sisters Frances and Vanessa, and I gained all the education we could, so that we had lives that were better than theirs. That is the main focus of someone who wants to serve on a board of education, is to make sure there is a structure in place so that all the students who come through the school system have lives better than ours who serve on the board. That was my focus for the eight years I served on the board. That will be my focus for the 13 months that I would get to serve if you choose. So, on November 3rd, when elections occur, I'm glad to have this conversation today. I look forward to talking about how I can work together with the other six board members to best serve our students, educators, families, and all who support St. Paul Public Schools.
Yep, Ms. Jamila Mommy, your turn.
Hello, and thank you so much, League of Women Voters, for creating this space for us. My name is Jamila Mommy. I was born and raised in Oromia, and I am the youngest of 13 children. Like so many people who came to the United States, my family and I came here from Ethiopia for the opportunity and the safety that America provided. In 2006, I arrived and was enrolled in Minneapolis District 6 School. I quickly learned that my educational experience were vastly different from my white peers. After attending a charter school, I struggled to find a place and gain acceptance to university. It was not until I was accepted to historically black college or university, Flanders Smith College, located in Little Rock, Arkansas, that I graduated with my bachelor's degree in political science and psychology that I understood that the problem in my education did not stem from me, but from the Eurocentric system that struggled to teach and see me. Today, I am seeing those experiences reflected in my nieces and all the young girls that I tutor in my community. After college, I came back home and started organizing for the DFL to elevate the rights and voices of Oromo people who are too often forgotten by the political structure. Today, I am the woman of color organizer with Take Action Minnesota and a proud union member and union-endorsed candidate. Fighting for Black, Brown, and Indigenous community and connecting with historically disadvantaged young people has been at the heart of everything that I do. Today, I am running for school board because I know what it feels like to be left of spaces and conversation that determine the future of youth. And I am prepared to fight to ensure all St. Paul school students have a seat and voice at the table, and our educators, not just teachers, but janitors, social workers, meal staff providers are heard, valued, and compensated. Thank you.
Mr. Omar Said.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for League of Women organizing and meeting today. Thank you. My name is Omar Said. I live in St. Paul in Eastside Seminide University. And I was born in Somalia and left country in 1991 and moved to St. Paul, United States. And I went to Arlington High School and graduated there, and I am a dad, and my children go to St. Paul Public School. I am a local small business owner and immigrant in St. Paul as a refugee. And I was able to graduate at Arlington High School and in health certificate from Century College, and I am a proud parent of St. Paul Public School as a student, as a member of the parent of advisor council, St. Paul Somali Caucus. I am a member of the East African Chalmers. I am also a St. Paul planning commissioner. I am also the neighbor United Funding Group. I am seeking to accomplish, if I elected, and education should be focused, and a student as whole, therefore, the student should be greater than toward the student's success. As a school member, I hope I can close achievement gap by increasing investment toward students' well-being. Access to diverse teachers and ensure high quality and curriculum is provided that gives students an equal opportunity. I'm seeking, and you vote on November 3rd, and I would like to continue.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Right. So, we will now proceed with questions. Just a reminder, you have one minute to answer a question, and we will have 30 seconds for rebuttal if necessary. I would choose the first person who will go to answer the question, and I would like the person sitting on your right to go next, and we'll just follow that way. So, the first question is, "St. Paul kids have been out of their physical classrooms since the teachers went on strike before COVID hit. Do you feel the special education students, students of colors, and students with IEPs are getting the education they deserve from St. Paul Public Schools?" And I would like Mr. James Fenshaw to go first.
Thank you for the question. This is certainly a real-time issue, figuring out what the district is going to do, how to pivot back from distance learning, and really a massive systems problem that's impacting all families in St. Paul Public Schools and in the community. Specifically, to students that are special education students, students with IEPs, or students with specialized learning needs, certainly have been struggling the most during this pandemic and this period of distance learning. I'm pleased to see that the district has prioritized special education students in the Faze model that they announced for when the district will pivot back to in-person learning. So, I'm very pleased to see that those students were centered in the plan because I know distance learning and asynchronous learning for students that need specialized services just doesn't work. So, really, huge shout-out to the parents and caregivers of those students that have special needs and need special support in our school district. And definitely, I'm pleased to see that the district has centered those students for them to be able to get the support that they need in the classroom in a safe way as quickly as possible.
Mr. Keith Hardy.
St. Paul Public Schools has done an overall excellent job in terms of providing services for our students with special education needs, from academic services and support services. I believe that focus will continue through this year of distance learning and other services that are not provided in person. I do know that some of my friends who are parents and caregivers of students with special education needs are a bit concerned of how much of the burden will fall, not the burden, but the opportunity will fall to them as in-home instructors, if you will, and they want to be sure their services provided to support them. And I'll make sure that's happening. In terms of our students who have immigrated from other countries, maybe English is their home language, I will study a little bit more to make sure that we're providing services and reaching out to them to make sure that their learning will not fall behind pace during this time. I do have a high concern for that. And finally, I want to make sure the board members.
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jamila Mommy.
Thank you. I'm really happy with what our districts are doing to center our students with special learning and ALL students. I personally have siblings who are now going through ALL program, and I'm happy with what our schools are doing, experimenting different models to just center our students. But I also understand that we are in a tough time, and we will continue to experiment to provide a better, whether it is access to internet and other needs, to just make sure that our students are getting whatever they need to thrive. But so far, we are working together.
Mr. Omar Said.
I think the district is doing a good job for helping for those who are ALL. But I believe that each family has a unique dynamic, and there are students who will be barrier and difficulty that requires specialized support. I believe physical and emotional need should be supported than academic. And I believe that families deserve to have a choice between proposal and learning model.
Ms. Charlotte Castro.
Thank you. Well, I agree that the district goals of distance learning and being able to switch from a totally in-face and person-to-person meeting to an online forum has been done, I think, in the best way that it could, given the circumstances that we're in, considering nobody had a contingency plan for this one. It occurred in March. I think that the school districts need to continue to reach out to families to ensure that they're given the support that they need on a regular basis. As the information that we're getting from Department of Health and Human Services changes, the CDC, I think we also need to make sure that we tailor what we're providing to families and to students so that if things do change, that we're able to react to them in a timely fashion, whether that be resources, other paraprofessionals, individuals that will get them the information that they need, but also create those lasting effects as it relates to the teaching goals that students need to achieve this year. Thank you.
All right. So, our second question is, "During Distance Learning 1.0 and so far in 2.0, many children are logging into their work later in the day. Many schools that were switched to the early start time, 7:30 a.m., have experienced tardiness and absences due to the early start time. How will you use what we are learning about what our families want and need in distance learning to make better choices?" I would like Mr. Keith Hardy to go first.
I too have heard, anecdotally, that some students are either logging in and stepping away, or not attending classes, or otherwise their attendance is lagging. From the board level, what we would want to do is have conversations with the superintendent and with administrators with what is the plan to help engage students, especially earlier in the day, and what is the plan to follow up with whoever is in the home, whether that's a parent or another caregiver. The other challenge, too, the numbers haven't changed, about 3% of our students don't have stable housing. So, we need to find a way also in that plan of how we reach those students who don't have an adult, who is making sure they're staying logged in, staying engaged in the classroom. So, those are part of the conversations we'll have at the board level.
Ms. Jamila Mommy.
We've been doing field research around technology, and a lot of parents are actually struggling with technologies that schools are sending to our parents because my family, for instance, they don't know how to use the technology. So, I think one way to tackle this problem would be to train the parent on how to properly use the technology. And the second thing is, we are struggling with internet. A lot of our families, they cannot afford to get high internet access. So, what can we do as city to tackle that problem? And also, surveying parents. Our parents, they don't know, they don't have the time to respond to some surveys. What can the teachers, our educators do to connect with parents, to ask them what is working well and what is not working? And with that, I feel like we could do better and help our students.
Mr. Omar Said.
Yeah, well, thank you. As a parent and also a community organizer, I know the difficulty that they are facing our immigrant families. I hear that some of them never use a computer, and some of them, they know how to use, but their language is not in the systems. And also, they are looking to hub line that speaks their language like every hour, every 30-minute that they can call. And also, that attendance. As a parent, I watch my kids every day, and we log in, and you know, before 11:00 in the morning. But what happened for those who don't speak English, that don't know how to log in? So, we want, you know, the district that if they can provide that hub line that can call.
Explain a situation in which you have disagreed with someone else in your professional life. How did you manage the conflict and resolve the issue? Ms. Jamila Mommy, I would like you to go first.
This agreement is a beautiful thing, and it could create a conversation that could lead to resolution. And I've seen that in my work as an organizer. It is through disagreement that we bring the most beautiful ideas that turns into solutions. So, I think just leaning into the values that we share, rather than the little greedy thing that makes us different, I think could get us to think about the bigger picture than a little, the disagreements that we are having.
Mr. Omar Said.
Say it again to the question.
Yep, sure. Explain a situation in which you have disagreed with someone else in your professional life. How did you manage the conflict and resolve the issue?
Well, you know, we, as a community organizer, sometimes we feel like arguing with the other, with two people, and we usually solve it, say, to manage that, talking to other people, you know, and also talking to friends, talking to, you know, their behavior, and that's where we usually manage it.
Ms. Castro.
Yeah, so, I think that I've been able to manage conflict a number of different ways, but I think the most powerful way is to be able to manage that conflict or to discuss that conflict kind of head-on. But that doesn't necessarily mean in the moment. That might mean that individuals take a pause or break and step back from whatever topic might have caused the conflict in the first place. I think when we're able to revisit those ideas or the things that caused us that conflict or that tension or that stress, and we come to that conversation and we're able to really listen, not that either of us is going to change each other's minds, but that we're able to listen, I think we can come up with the best ideas. I think it's the times that we don't listen, that we think you're right and I'm wrong, and that's it, are the times that we get the least amount done. So, if we can come to a place of empathy and we can come to a place where we're actually willing to share ideas, I think we can turn that conflict into something that's better for all of us. In this case, it would probably be the St. Paul Schools. So, thank you.
Mr. James Fenshaw.
Thank you very much. I didn't know if you wanted us to chime in on the last question, too, but I just wanted to add on that, that I really appreciated the nod that Dr. Hardy made to housing insecurity, and also knowing that, you know, with families facing challenges at home with distance learning, there's a whole lot more going on from a family support standpoint that the district has a role in arranging resources for and whatnot. But to this question in particular about disagreements and managing conflict, through a variety of community work that I've done, through governance, I know how to tackle really tough issues and discuss them in an authentic and genuine manner. I know that listening is really important and understanding where people are coming from, and those are the values that I take when I approach working through tough issues. Especially, many of these issues would come up on the school board, many of these come up in community. It's because people really care and people are really passionate, a disagreement occurs. And I believe in listening and not questioning people's intentions and trying to really understand where people are coming from has worked well for me in those spaces, and those are some of the values and approaches that I would take as a school board member.
I apologize for missing you. If you'd like to add something, you can have a minute, all three of you, because I think I missed all three of you for the second question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think I'll just add, based on what else I said, you know, I understand that there's issues with attendance logistics and some confusion from families in who is responsible for attendance, some families versus students versus teachers. I've been following some of that discussion. In terms of distance learning at home, I was really surprised hearing from a fifth-grade teacher in St. Paul Public Schools at an event earlier this cycle that, in the spring, her experience with distance learning was having fifth graders contacting her at midnight, 1:00 in the morning about assignments, and just kind of way above and beyond the scope of what I had even realized the teachers were facing from students. So, just really approaching this period that we're in right now that's really challenging with flexibility and understanding that everyone's struggling, teachers are struggling, students are struggling, families and caregivers turned at-home educators with the support that they have and the support that the district can provide, just having some understanding that it's tough and that we're all in this together and approaching it from that framework, I think is really healthy and really important.
Mr. Keith Hardy.
A year ago, June, at the company where I was working, we were in the crux of being behind schedule. The departments in my company worked in silos. People didn't want to share information with other people. My nature was to go in and break down the silos and say, "Hey, people, we need to talk. We got to get this project done. We have a deadline." My manager's approach was a lot different or laid back, hence the disagreement. What I leaned upon, leaned into, was Stephen Covey's Principle Number Two, seek first to understand and then to be understood. I asked questions, I stayed calm, then I presented my viewpoint, and we met in the middle. That's how I like to address disagreements. That's what I would do moving forward on the school board if elected for those 13 months, is to listen, present my ideas, work toward the best plan of success for our students.
Ms. Castro, I would like to ask you if you had some opinion on my second question because I missed you. Would you like me to repeat it?
If you could, please.
Yes. "During Distance Learning 1.0 and so far in 2.0, many children are logging into their work later in the day. Many schools that were switched to the early start time, 7:30 a.m., have experienced tardiness and absences due to the early start time. How will you use what we are learning about what our families want and need in distance learning to make better choices?"
Thank you. So, I think while early start times might have worked for peer-to-peer or face-to-face instruction, I think the school district needs to be flexible. So, I'll echo the flexibility topic in that remote and online learning is a challenge for everybody. I think the pandemic and COVID-19 especially have highlighted an array of issues that are plaguing not only us as a country, but us as a school district, whether we talk about housing insecurity, we also talk about food insecurity, we also talk about medical access for individuals that are low-income or students of color. And I think the scenario that the school board has laid out, while it's good, also needs to be flexible, needs to be fluid as much as it can so it can serve our students and the populations, and some of the hurdles that they're encountering as we move towards, you know, moving from that online space to maybe a hybrid application or something where students are then back into the classroom. So.
So, our next question is, "How will you help build enrollment, especially at community schools that are struggling?" Mr. Omar Said, I would like you to go first.
Well, thank you. I will help our community that who is struggling to hire their, to hire the teachers that speaks their language. Hire the, when we hire the teachers that speaks their language, and it will be easy to learn a language. And I will be helping to hire, to help their academic if I am elected.
Ms. Charlotte Castro.
Thanks. I'm glad you asked this question because I think each election cycle we go through, what will the school board do to build enrollment? And I think it's kind of a three-pronged approach. I think we have to recruit teachers that look like the students that they serve. I think that's done in a number of different ways, whether it's other educational bodies, it's internships or apprenticeships. I've also floated the idea of doing some sort of mentorship program where we partner teachers that have been in the district for more than five years with teachers that are just coming on board as a way to give them a place to air their grievances and to talk about community ideas. I think we have to look at what charter schools are doing as compared to public schools. I think there's some definite things that we can learn from what those charter schools are doing well, and I think we need to put those into practice into our public schools. And then, I think we need to take a very granular dive into what each school is doing and to ensure that each school is effective for the students that it serves. That might be P- Um, that might be P S E O classes for students that are looking for higher education, that might be apprenticeships or internships for those students that decide after high school they want to move into college.
Mr. James Fransworth?
Thank you for the question. It's super important. Uh, the St. Paul Public Schools is currently facing an enrollment crisis and has been for a long time. Uh, so a few things that I would mention, um, that St. Paul Public Schools needs to do is examine schools in the area and what they're doing well. Um, surveying, uh, and doing exit surveys of families that have left the district to figure out why they're leaving and how the district can improve. Um, offering programs and services that families want, particularly in the area of arts and music and well-rounded education. And, um, hiring a culturally competent workforce. As a student in St. Paul Public Schools and as a student in general, it's really important to have teachers and staff members and faculty that look like you. Um, and that's, that's really important. That speaks to the offering of ethnic studies curriculum that SPPS is working on and a bunch of other factors. Having, having a, um, workforce that reflects the student population is super important. And I know the district has work to do in that area as well.
Mr. Keith Hardy?
As a member of the school board, I am going to be all into people's faces about marketing our schools. We have some fabulous schools. When I served previously, I had a chance to spend, visit each school three to five times and not just going for special programs, but just sit in a classroom and watch the students engage, talk with students, talk with educators, talk with the administrators. And that's what you get to do as a board member. You do have to learn about these schools and you just market them. If you want to enjoy our schools as a member of the community, just go to a principal and say, hey, how can I volunteer? We would love to have many of our adults and our older teens volunteering in our schools. And when you see how students are loved and supported in our schools, you're going to send your family members, say, hey, this is the place to go. The numbers can be increased, definitely, but the love and the support and the passion of the educators and those in the buildings, that's what you want your children to experience. I would definitely be marketing that. That can help increase enrollment.
Ms. Jamila Maumee?
Thank you. So with the issue of enrollment, uh, uh, increasing enrollment, we need to talk about why are we losing our student, uh, from public school? So as someone who, whose parents, uh, they took me out from public school and, uh, took me to charter school. And the reason is because of the lack of support. Um, my, my father, he loved to engage with my education. He, he would come to school, uh, to just talk to my, uh, my teachers, but there's no language, uh, uh, language that, he doesn't speak English, so there's lack of communication. So we need to do a better job in recruiting, uh, diversity in language. Uh, and also there's a huge problem with, uh, lack of, uh, celebrating non-traditional holidays. Uh, the, the other, the other, uh, day I had a conversation with a parent and they said, my kids, they want, they go to public school. And every, uh, twice a year, my kid is, uh, marked absent and because they are missing for a non-traditional holiday. I'm a Muslim, so what can we do to better that?
Teacher from a Westside School. How will you work to support Westside Schools' children, families and staff at our four Westside Schools are often and oft taught in many decisions? And I would like Ms. Charlotte Castro to go first.
Thanks. Uh, I think there's a number of ways that we can support the Westside Schools. I think we have to have listening sessions, not only with the students and the teachers, but also with community members. Um, I think being able to listen and come back with the ideas that those students and those teachers and those community members want to instill, uh, will allow us to provide the best education for those Westside Schools. I also think that the school board, um, needs to provide, uh, some better, uh, listening, um, as well as some better site visits. Uh, I know that there are a lot of schools and there are a lot of students that we need to meet with, uh, but I think if we make a concerted effort, uh, especially for locations that we think are not, not, um, up to standard, uh, that we put some extra effort in, because with that extra effort, we're going to get a better result in the end.
Mr. James Fransworth?
Yes, um, in order to support Westside Schools, we need to go directly and be with and in community with teachers and staff and students and families from those schools. Going and listening and engaging directly with people, um, you know, given some barriers due to the pandemic right now and other things that looks a little bit different, but going in community and being with people directly in schools, um, that are feeling impacted by different things, depending on where they are in the city, is really important. Um, as a student in 2015, I went to public comment, um, at the school board and advocated for student representation on the school board, and that led to the start of SEAB, which is the Student Engagement Advancement Board. Uh, I'm really proud of that and really proud of the ways that students are engaged with district-level decision-making. And I'd want to utilize our student representatives and utilize, um, students directly in the schools to hear from them and what they feel the issues are, have conversations with families, have conversations with teachers. Um, I'm sure all of the constituencies will have different, um, points to bring up, but going and being in community, um, with Westside, um, educators and students and families would be really important to me.
Mr. Keith Hardy?
And thank you, Mr. Fransworth, for advocating for student engagement with the board. I remember those conversations. When I served on the board, I was the District Three Liaison to the Westside, though had those conversations at Wesco Meetings, at Boca Chica, at Jersey Bexman when it was open, at the Community Center. What I would love to see and what I've continued to advocate for as a board member if elected is to have a pre-K to 12 curriculum that is unique to the Westside Schools. So in my, on the near east side, right left in Paintsfield, we have aerospace engineering from Fransworth Elementary through Johnson High School. So let's think of a program like that that goes from the elementary schools in the Westside all the way to Humboldt High. And we can make that happen, and I think that would definitely lift up the image of many people of the Westside being the great side for education.
Ms. Jamila Maumee?
Yes, um, I will echo and, on engagement and investment. Um, and when I say engagement and investment, we need to have people who are directly impacted at the table. People who are directly impacted are those who are close to the solution and bringing the teachers, the students, uh, all the educators at the table to talk about ways we could make, uh, we could better, uh, the, uh, the, uh, our education for our students. I, I always say, bring everyone who's impacted to the table. They are closest to the solution. Thank you.
Mr. Umer Said?
Well, thank you for bringing that question on. Well, I have, uh, families like who, who lives on Westside and have, uh, uh, their children go school there, at Humboldt. And, uh, they are saying that, um, there's a, uh, lack of communication to, uh, parent and, and, uh, and, uh, the, the districts. And, uh, so what we need is that, um, we need to, um, connect, uh, leaders there, community leaders, and we need to, uh, connect to the parent to that, uh, who engages schools and, uh, connect to the, uh, uh, teachers. And, uh, we need a, a communication that, um, can, uh, make it better that our schools.
If elected, how do you plan to utilize teachers and parents in the decision-making process? Uh, Mr. James Fransworth, I would like you to go first.
Yes, thank you very much for the question. Educators and teachers, especially right now when there's been unprecedented pressures and indifferent, just adjusting to what it means to be a teacher, um, right now, are the backbone of our district. And I plan to be a relentless advocate for teachers on the school board. Um, being a son of two teachers, uh, myself, I have that, um, reminder right there at home every day. Um, in terms of families, uh, I was proud to serve as a student on the Highland Park Senior High School, PTSA, um, and see that family engagement work and see how families are really invested in the schools. I had the pleasure of interacting with a lot of families from all across the district during this experience and know that, um, family engagement looks different to different communities, um, culturally and otherwise. There's different ways we need to work and the school board needs to be responsive to getting all families at the table, um, whether that's through that PAC system or just reimagining how the district does community engagement in general, um, for families, um, and how to bring teachers into the conversation as well, because they're, um, the ones that are on the front lines every day with our students.
Mr. Keith Hardy?
With 2020 being the year of change, indeed, for our society, part of that is people are speaking up more, more empowered to speak their mind. I would continue doing what I did when I served on the board and that's being in the community at the coffee shops, at the community centers, at the district council meetings, just being there available for people to come and share with me. Making sure my door is open to educators, to educational assistants, to teaching assistants to talk about what's happening in their world and how they want to better serve our students. Uh, going to meetings where our labor staff, our custodians, all those who do the behind-the-scenes work that make our building so attractive for our students and families to listen to them and make sure they have a safe environment, make sure they have what they can, make their environment better so they can better serve our students and our families and our educators. So I would just continue to listen actively, proactively, being in the community.
Ms. Jamila Maumee?
Will you please repeat the question for me?
Uh, yes. If elected, how do you plan to utilize teachers and parents in the decision-making process?
Yes. Um, I think everything is start with conversation. And in conversation, there need to, everybody need to be at the table. Um, when elected, I will be at the table with the people who sent me to that table, the parents, the teachers. Um, when I say the teachers, educators in the school building, uh, the unions, everyone will be at the table making that decision with me. And I will be returning back and asking them how I could do better, what we are, what is it that we are doing that is, that is great, uh, and how can we continue that? And if there's, uh, if, if there is something that we need to work on, what is it? It's, it's always about a conversation and bringing people with you in that conversation.
Mr. Umer Said?
First of all, I would be listening, listening to, uh, parent, listening to the, uh, students and visiting, um, um, high schools, visiting, uh, middle schools and, uh, uh, listening to teachers, listening to parents. Um, one thing that I will be, uh, I will be, uh, will be willing to do is that, uh, have a such, uh, sessions that can bring up, uh, teachers and school board members and unions and, uh, and, uh, parents and, and, uh, community leaders that, uh, can see what is missing in our, our schools, how we're going to make it better. And, uh, I will be, uh, advocating on those. Thank you.
Ms. Charlotte Castro?
Great question. I think as some of the topics that you've highlighted today, there's a lot of different things to consider when we're talking about a decision-making process. So as a teacher myself from Minnesota State, this semester looks a lot different than the spring did. Students at least were able to meet in person and then had to transition offline. So at least you were familiar with the individuals that were in your classroom. Uh, this school year is totally different because I don't know some of the faces like I did the previous school year. So in my institution, it's helpful to have, um, other faculty and other staff, uh, personnel that can support me. It's also helpful that Minnesota State reaches out on a consistent basis to ensure that there are, uh, webinars and other workshops that we can attend so that we create the best synergy of ideas out of, uh, what teachers are experiencing. Similarly, for parents, we do the same thing. There's a lot of different ways that we can communicate with our parents. Some prefer a text, some prefer a phone call, some an email, sometimes a portal, and then we have to go back and do that all over again to make sure that those needs are being met. So it's constantly monitoring and constantly being flexible.
So the last question of tonight is, if elected, managing the St. Paul School, uh, public school budget will be a big part of your job. Please describe your ability to analyze and manage finances. And I would like Mr. Keith Hardy to go first.
Prior to my first election on the St. Paul School Board in 2007, I served for four years on the Citizens Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. Learned quite a bit about school budgets, school district budgets during that time, along with that I've worked in finance or related to finance in my professional life for more than ten years. So I've taken a hard look at line items and allocations and everything related to a budget. Uh, what I've learned over the years, including my eight years on the school board previously, is how to listen to people, set the priorities and make sure the funding is provided. And one of those key areas that I learned from going to Washington every February for four years was to make sure the special education funding is provided from the federal level that makes it easier for budgeting at the local level.
Ms. Jamila Maumee?
Uh, I am an organizer. Uh, I've organized with, uh, with a lot of organization and, um, a lot of time when we don't know something, there are other people who knows. I don't know a lot about budgeting, but I'm really excited to learn. But one thing that I am sure about is within our budgeting, uh, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing, that ESL students are getting the education they deserve. Our special, our special, uh, special, um, kids with, uh, our special need kids are getting the education they deserve. Making sure that, uh, the budget that we are allocating are, we, uh, is allocated to every, um, every student that, for every student. Uh, that's what I'm going to make sure, and I'm going to do that by working with all, uh, school board members, but with teachers, with unions and everyone. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, well, but, I mean, number one priority will be is, uh, if we, um, um, doing the budgeting every, every year, every two years, uh, we need to make sure that, um, uh, our teachers has, uh, more high bay and also special educations. And, uh, as a community organizer, um, I will be willing to go to the state and, and, you know, go to the legislature and, and, uh, ask more money if we need it.
Uh, Ms. Charlotte Castro?
Uh, in my professional career as a project implementation specialist, I have to deliver projects on time with the allocated resources and the number of hours for individual specialists, uh, training, go-live, uh, software into production. Uh, I think the budget for, uh, the next few years for St. Paul Schools is going to look a lot different than it did previously. We'll have to manage priorities about whether we're going to, um, put those dollars into technology. Will we be able to get students and teachers, uh, the correct resources that they need? Will we start to create a sort of hybrid model? Will we create sort of pods? Will we put students back into the, um, classroom? Will they need additional P P E sanitation? What does that look like? And that budget has to remain fluid for those students and for those teachers.
Mr. James Fransworth?
Yes, thank you. Um, over the years, I've had many meetings with the district CFO to learn about the St. Paul Public Schools budget and have attended, uh, school budgeting sessions in the middle of the cold winter at Harding High School with just a few other people to learn about how the district was investing in my school and my peers' school. Uh, as a student at the U of M, I serve on this university senate committee on finance and planning. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to go over the university's capital plan. Uh, so I've had experience with large institutional budgeting. Uh, I believe and it, I think it's important to mention when we're talking about budgeting, that, uh, budgeting must come with robust community engagement, robust and inclusive community engagement to make sure all stakeholders are at the table. So I'm very confident in my ability to analyze and manage the St. Paul Public Schools budget and know that that's a cornerstone, uh, opportunity and cornerstone role of being a school board member.
I guess we do have time for one more question. So the last question is going to be, where can residents, residents get a copy of the District 625 budget? And I would like, uh, Ms. Jamila Maumee to go first.
Question, please.
I can't, what, I lost it. Yeah. Where can residents get a copy of the District 625 budget?
So, sorry, can you repeat the question for me again?
Yeah. Where can residents get a copy of the District 625 budget?
Yes. Um, I think all, we can find all the information on, uh, S P F E, uh, website. And one thing that I'm going to add is we need to be intentional in the language that we are using, uh, so that every resident in St. Paul can actually access it. That means we need to do better in translating in different language, so all of our pair, uh, the, our students' parents can get that information, uh, because the, one way we could make, well, one way we could ensure that everyone is engaged is by actually communicating the language that they understand. Once elected, that's actually the first thing that I want to work on is ensuring that we have inclusivity in our, in the language that we are communicating with our parents.
Mr. Umer Said?
Yes, that, yeah, it's, it's on the website and, but, yes, um, um, as a refugee, um, my mom never speak English. And, uh, we, um, need to be better that to, uh, when we, um, burden something in the website, it has to be translated, translated right away. And, um, um, because, um, our, some refugee community don't speak English and then they don't know how to log in computer, but once they log in, they need it. They need to see that their language is, is in there. And, uh, I will be advocating that when, once I elected.
Ms. Charlotte Castro?
So while the budgeting information is available on SPPS, what I learned from the last time that I ran for school board, which was last fall, is that some of the information is hard to come by. Uh, if you look at the meeting minutes, they can be hundreds of pages long and having to- And having to go through that information to find the real substance of what was talked about that evening if you couldn't attend that meeting or if you weren't able to attend for one reason or another, it can be daunting. So I think while the information is out there, it is hard to find. So we need to clean that up and give individuals, whether they be concerned citizens like myself, parents or teachers, maybe even students, the ability to find that information in a much more easy fashion.
Mr. James Fransworth.
Yeah, so as many of my colleagues have said, you can find the district's budget information on the website. As mentioned, I've found working with the district's Office of Budget and Finance and their staff from the CFO all the way down have been very responsive to me as a student and community member wanting to learn more about the budget. But per some of the points that others are making as well, it's very important, you know, me as someone who has a lot of privilege and is, and is able to go and find that information relatively quickly and understand it. There's a variety of families across the district that may need support in understanding that and engaging with it. So that goes back to having robust engagement around the budget. That goes back to bringing back the SPPS Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. That was on, that's on hiatus. And that absolutely needs to come back and include all stakeholders at the table to help bring transparency and over, community oversight to the budgeting system. And also making sure that people who don't speak English as their first language or need other accommodations to find that information have the support to be able to do so.
Mr. Keith Hardy.
For those who have access to the internet, the full budget for this fiscal year definitely is available at spps.org for the St. Paul Public Schools website. For those who don't have internet access, feel free to reach out to a current school board member if you have contact information for him or her or to me as a candidate. And I'll be happy to give you the phone number of a staff member who can get you that budgeting information. Also, if you're looking for specific information within the budget, as was mentioned earlier, sometimes it's hard to find that on the internet. Again, reach out to your current school board members. That is part of their role is to help you to be able to have access to that information in your home language. Or else I'd be happy to help you connect with someone as well.
Thank you, everyone, for your responses. Now we will proceed to closing statements. Everyone will have one minute and we will start with Mr. Umar Said.
Thank you, thank you, League of Women Voters and for organizing tonight and having given us opportunity. And I believe every community has its strengths and potential. Every community has valuable and every kids deserve an equitable and educational opportunity. Tonight, I am asking you, St. Paul, to give me your vote on November 3rd. And also I need your support to by logging in and say it for schools.org. Thank you.
Ms. Mrs. Charlotte Castro.
Election Day is just 50 days away. And in the state of Minnesota, absentee ballots get sent out in four days. I'm running for school board for the same reasons that I ran last fall. Because I believe that more can be done to help the students that attend St. Paul schools and that more can be done for the teachers that serve them. I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to work with community volunteers and members to have that engagement that we've talked about this election cycle, last election cycle and the one before. I believe in community partnerships to be able to provide the best education for our students. And I'm willing to create a greater educational foundation for our students. If you have additional questions or comments or would like to reach out, please follow, please go to charliecastroforspps.com and reach out. I'd gladly continue this conversation with any of you in the community.
Mr. James Fransworth.
Once again, want to thank the League of Women Voters, St. Paul, SPNN and the other community partners that brought us together this, this evening to talk about our schools and community. I'm running for school board because I want to take the governance, governance experience that I've acquired, my time as a student in St. Paul Public Schools and my time in community, doing community engagement and building partnerships and put that to work on behalf of St. Paul families, teachers, students and staff. It's a really crucial time right now to have strong experienced leadership at the local school district level. It's going to take all hands on deck to make sure families are supported. I'm very eager to get to work. If you want to learn more about me or want to reach out or connect further, you can visit my website, which is jamesforforspps.com. Thank you very much.
Mr. Keith Hardy.
To my fellow residents and voters in St. Paul, you have on the ballot four fantastic young leaders who want to serve on the school board. You also have a current school board member, special appointment, Jim Foo, who wasn't able to join us today, who will be a candidate. And they definitely bring a lot to the table. And I hope they will be candidates next year for a full four-year term. For the special election to finish the final 13 months of former board chair John's term, I feel it's highly important to have someone with experience. I won't need to have training from the school board members. I can hop right in. I have relationships with state legislators, have relationships with national congress members to help St. Paul Public Schools continue to get better and stronger during this year of change. I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Feel free to contact me through my Facebook page. Keith Hardy for school board, candidate for school board. Happy to talk with you.
Ms. Jimmy Lamame.
As a school board, as a school in St. Paul, we have come a long way. We have hired, we hired more BI PAC educators, diverse school boards, more diverse school administrators and staff and nurtured the leadership of our youth. And we can continue to move the needle to create a more accessible, fully funded, inclusive, high-quality education and safe environment for our students and educators. And this time showed us that we could do all that because with this pandemic, we showed what co-governance looked like. When the state, the city, the school board, everyone in the community came together to center the voices of our community, we, we showed that. And we will continue to do that. And once we get elected, once I get elected, I'll continue to do, to move that work with everyone to, to center the voices and of our teachers and students.
Thank you for all the candidates for being here today and we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.